To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of items that we need to add to the agenda under Roman numeral four. Item B would be Friends of the Library, Shelley Vatty. And then item H would be street closure, center between E and F, Christmas lighting, twelve one, from seventeen five thirty to seventeen. And just a note that the work at regular session minutes of Fox seven twenty-five to seven seventy-seven. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda as elected.
Second.
A second vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And here the communications and informational items. Is anyone here have any items to share with us?
I'm sorry.
In regards to, well, we had just some items on our informational agenda here, and I didn't know if anyone was here to share with us anything other than Shelley. Shelley, we added you, so I know you're here. If you want to go ahead, we'll skip down to the friends of the library.
Okay. I'm gonna start by giving you all this. I want to talk today about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It is a project of the Friends of the Library that's considering taking on, and so we wanted to make the town council aware of it.
Can I have one?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There you go. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library is a nonprofit organization that started in nineteen ninety-five. The goal of the library was to give a book a month to every child from birth to five years old. So they would have their own library of age-appropriate books that would light the flame of lifelong learning, of the love of books, of the love of libraries. As of two thousand thirteen, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library had given away a million books. In two thousand fourteen, they were given the Library of Congress Literary Award for Best Practices for Nonprofits Regarding Libraries and Books. In two thousand sixteen, they reached the goal of giving away a million books per month. They have chapters in the U.S., Canada, the U.K., and Australia. The Friends of the Library are looking at the possibility of opening a chapter in Lake County. For twenty-five dollars a year, they can provide a book mailed to the house of a child every month from birth to five years old. So the purpose of the imagination project would be for us to, as the Friends of the Library Dolly Parton Imagination policy, raise money for individuals and nonprofits to support the goal of giving a book to every child in Lake County from birth to five years old. It's not a need-based, you have to sign up because you don't have enough money, or because your family's underprivileged, or you're on food stamps, or something like this. It is every child regardless. People who agreed with us that they would be willing to sign up are the home visit nurses in home care, some daycares, the hospital, the local OB-GYN has talked about signing up her customers before the birth of their children even. And then parents could sign up their kids as well at the library or at other organizations. We will be making presentations to community groups like the Rotary, the Seroptimists, the Lions Club about getting by, and we'll also be making pleas directly to individuals. Rather than making a plea to the council for the city to chip in, we are just asking the council to consider this, and if they think that having the imagination library program, the Imagination Literacy Program in Lake County is a good idea, if they would give us a letter of support that we can use when we make presentations to other organizations or to other people in the community. As I said, the way it works is twenty-five dollars a year, we'll give a child a book delivered to their home once a month for the entire year. There is a nonprofit in Oregon that is so interested in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library becoming a statewide entity that they will match dollar for dollar, every dollar that we raised for the first three years. So to give you an idea of what we're looking at, there are currently approximately three hundred and twenty-five kids in Lake County. A lot of them in North County, where they have very limited access to libraries and other enrichment activities. We could, for five thousand dollars a year, give every kid in Lake County a book, if we could get them signed up. Our goal for the first year is to raise that five thousand dollars, so that even if we don't get every kid signed up, we have a little nest egg to make this an ongoing concern year after year. The same way that this is not need-based, every child is eligible to sign up regardless of income, this is a program that never, ever asks the parents for donations. The parents might decide to donate because they love us, or they might be part of a different organization that gets approached, but it's never a bill of, you know, we give your kid a book, please give us one. Are there any questions?
Are you talking about raising the five thousand and then having the matching five thousand, or how are you doing that?
We set a goal of five thousand. Regardless of whether we raise five hundred, or fifteen hundred, or five thousand, the nonprofit will match us dollar for dollar.
So then you'd have ten thousand.
Then we'd have ten thousand, and we would be sustainable for a minimum of two years. And if we had more than that, you know, sustainable into the future.
I see.
Thank you. Awesome.
Appreciate your presentation. Are there any other items that we need to discuss on the informational communication? We all have found the information we've got here.
I just to call you.
Yes, on your back.
On the safety fund issue. We went through, when I first got here, and we reallocated departments for different funds through safe. Like dispatch was being, they were charged as though they were fighter fighters the whole time, which really they're not, because they sit on the desk, you know, so we had to change some of that. And instead of getting, what, six thousand dollars back, we got fourteen, over fourteen thousand dollars this year savings, just by doing that. So I think that was a really good savings.
We just had it listed as they were fire fighters.
Yeah, and so, but they have a list of how everybody's supposed to be. Really, the most exclusive one is the street fund, you know, because that's where a lot of those accidents happen. But now on public works time card, they actually put down, you know, if they work on streets or they're working, you know, sewer or water or whatever, you know, so it's kind of broke down on their time cards. But that really did save us quite a bit of money, so.
That's a good savings.
Yeah, that was really good.
Good news.
Saving every bit we can, sort of.
Move on to public comment period. Do we have anyone here with public comment?
Yes, I am.
If you could state your name and.
Brittany Love, just L-O-V. Two ten North H, here in Lakeview. I actually have two things that I would like to just address, one being the water issue. Water issue. My son, I bathe him every night, and this is not just like a clear the pipes, flushing the system kind of thing. This is, my son doesn't want to get into the tub because his, it looks dirty night after night. It is not just a once-in-awhile thing. I don't believe that, I've called Salem, Portland, and Eugene offices and asked them for advice, opinions. They said to bring it to town council, and that our town needs to be addressing that a little bit better, as far as now they're going to step in and make sure that actions are being taken, that their needs have been addressed as well, and that Jeff needs to be a little bit better about dealing with the public as opposed to just putting it off. Because the first time out of four complaints, I never heard once back from anybody, and that's not Tana's job, really. So the first time I heard back was on a public notice on Facebook, was the first time I heard anything about the water being safe. And I don't know about you, but I don't like, I don't want to drink this, I don't want to bathe in it, I don't want to wash anything in it, and this is not the first time. So it's kind of frustrating. It's really frustrating. So, the water, I'm sure you guys have heard numerous complaints and every, I don't know if anyone comes and complains, I know that they get a lot of threats to not have bills paid, that doesn't solve anything, just, you know, griping on Facebook doesn't solve anything. I would like to see something done personally. I rent, so I can't install a filtration system in my house or anything else like that to solve the issue for me and my son personally. So.
How do you say that?
What? I'm the same. No, not just the same. And then my second is daycare, for lack thereof, here in Lakeview. I just spent three hours in climate for Head Start for Policy Council that I volunteer for, for him, and they said to bring it up to town council. There is no daycare. There are private home caregivers, that's it. I can't find anybody to help me out, and he gets three and a half hours in Head Start. They don't have any approval for early education, or early Head Start, or daycare options in that facility, and they wouldn't be able to do anything until possibly next year to fit it into their budget, to even get it approved. I mean, they just got the new site, and they're trying to get everything else up and running. So they told me that I should bring it to town council. So those are my two, my two concerns, I guess, for raising a child here.
I understand your concerns and your frustrations, and I appreciate you sharing with council your frustrations are in regards to the water. I will state that the town did, I know, have a doubt with some bad water here recently as far as discolorization or discolor of the water. And we do from time to time, and I understand it's cyclical, and it depends on the area of the community that you're in at that particular time, because my house doesn't seem to coincide with other places in town when they seem to be having problems, when I hear of the frustrations. It is sediment in the lines. I have watched it for years myself as a town councilor, because I've been concerned with my drinking of water. I drink it every day, and I, you know, it hasn't done anything to me, and I trust that the tests that we have run with the town council are qualified tests run by the state, and they tell us that our water is safe for drinking. So I do hope that someday we can get a lot of money in our coffers to where we can set up a water filtration plant or have drinking water in our community. And I think that's something that all of our councils would agree upon, you've looked at it many times, and have had, as you said, frustrations post before us in the council meetings. The town did notify the radio stations, and with the lack of daily newspaper, that is about the fastest way that they can get the information out, other than, I guess, notice was posted on Facebook as well. But the town did put on the radio stations, they noticed that the water was safe for drinking, the mode was discolor, and they do also have the notices on the, when they give the water results, they're sent out with the bills from time to time. So that is my comment on that. I understand your frustrations, and I appreciate you sharing them with me.
Are you still having this issue, or was it during when the lines were being flushed?
Mine has been going on for six months.
Really?
I have complained, I complained before, and was never contacted. And it's not like I've called, I've come up here, and I walked up here, and I've had my complaints, and I know that Tana has put that down. And I never had anything got back to me, which is against policy, per Jeff's job, is what I was told by the Springfield representative. He said that any complaint needs to be addressed directly by Jeff regardless of. I unclog my drains at least twice a month because of the sediment. It clogs up all of my drains. I have to run through, and it's because of the actual sediment. I mean, you can see sediment in it. I run filters just to try to do drinking water. It's still discolor, but it doesn't get rid of everything, and that's what the man, I cannot remember his name, called me, both Portland and Springfield told me that just a Brita or a pure water filter will not get rid of that kind of stuff, and it's gonna be, it'll cause you issues regardless, and you'll have that sediment.
Can I make a suggestion? I don't know if you have drained your hot water heater, or had the landlord drain it, but sometimes if you drain it, or, and haven't checked the anrod in the top of it, because if that is corroded, that will, those sediments will sit in the bottom of your hot water heater. And those, it helps, I'm not saying it's gonna solve your water problem, but it does help.
And the other thing that I was gonna say is that typically with a flushing or anything like that, your water should run clear after twenty to thirty minutes. From six thirty a.m. till four p.m., entire day, I had nothing but coffee-colored water. And that was the entire day, and it was not resolving after any kind of flushing or anything like that. So, I mean, that's, to me, excessive and disgusting, and especially when you had a kid with the flu that week. So it makes it really difficult just to function day to day, and I feel like I need to buy my water or take my son out at least three times a month to go bathe at my mother's house, because she lives ten miles out of town, because my water looks disgusting, and it's very frustrating.
And you said on North?
North H.
Two ten.
Right, yeah, I'm right by the examiner.
We know that several lines need to be replaced that are corroded, and that is a huge financial thing, and I think that our town manager is looking into that, and so is Jeff, but a part of it is just that we have, in some places, there are some really, really old lines. It might not be a bad idea if you gave Roberta the owner of your house, so that person had to conduct, because that's the person who will be responsible to some of the issues.
Right, and just if I can say something too, is I never heard of a complaint, so if it's going expressly to Jeff, I need to know that, you know, so that I can respond to.
Yes.
Because I had not heard.
Yeah. And I, and I love, and it could be Montgomery as well, there's Brittany Montgomery or Brittany Love.
Okay.
So it could be either, either or. But I did bring up my water to show, I've taken pictures of it, I've made sure that I like, I brought it with me, and it's, you can see the chunks. I mean, it's like, I don't want to bathe, I don't feel clean, you know, sometimes I look at it and I'm just like, really just like, yeah, it's, sorry, but yeah.
And just FYI, I have been talking to the engineer about it, and seeing what to do, there's some options. If we are forced to go into a water treatment plant, it will probably be anywhere from two and a half to seven million dollar project, which means that the water rate alone, just for water, will be anywhere from about forty to fifty dollars, you know, depending, which will be another issue that we have to address for complaints, because then people can't afford, you know, that. So just so you know, but I am talking to the engineer.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, there's multiple wells, and springs is what they were explaining to me.
Yeah.
And that it might not be all of the wells, all of the pipes, all, you know, any of that. So if it's, you know, if it's one well that needs a different filtration system, because that's what they were saying, if it, please come here.
Oh, yeah.
Please, stop. Come on. Sit down.
I'm here swishing here.
If, he says it's, when I explained how the water didn't clear up after a certain amount of time, he said that stuff, maybe it needs to be the filter, it needs to be moved up higher in the well, maybe that could be a solution, but he said that he's also offered numerous different solutions, and just seeing which one works and which one doesn't.
Well, I had that discussion with the engineer today. And also, we have spring water, so in this, you know, winter, springtime, then, you know, whenever it starts running, you'll notice clean water. A lot of it is just that it's built up in the lines, and so it'll take a treatment to get rid of it. That's the only thing that's really, and then it won't be overnight, because it's just kicked in. But we are trying to do what we can, and I am having conversations right now about what we can do to help.
And that's all, and that's all, it just, you know, it doesn't do any good to just sit and gripe and threaten to not pay your bill or anything like that. It's not, it's not effective, it doesn't do anything. It's just me voicing that I want to make sure things are safe for my son and, you know, for myself.
And they are.
For everybody else, you know, and that he can, I can be okay with even putting him in the tub, because I don't know, you know, how kids are, but they don't keep water out of their mouth.
But it is, we test every single week, and all our tests have come back that we don't have any negative chemicals or something that we would be concerned about, but we are checking to see, it's just the look of it, pretty much. So that's what we're working on, so.
Thank you very much for your comments. No other public comments, we'll move forward on our department reports. Do we have any additional notes from department heads?
I do, real quick, a couple of things, real quick. One is Clint Smith contacted me last week from Thunder Ranch, he would like to do a photo shoot in an urban setting in the first week of January. I think he was talking about the alley that sort of surrounds town hall here. He said it would be very low-key, very out of the public eye, but just wanted to have our blessing as far as doing that photo shoot. He may, or may, being Clint Smith, there may be weapons with him, so that, I think, was his reason for contacting us, and so.
What is his reason for wanting the photos, I guess is the question?
I'm assuming for his business.
Advertising.
I would assume, or it could be for, I know he's part of a lot of magazines, where they do a lot of articles on him, and so I didn't get into that much detail, but he said it would be very, very quiet, very low-key, very out of the public eye, but it would be in the town area, and so he was just asking for approval on that.
It sounds like just a good heads up, I don't think we need it.
No.
Or approval, but we appreciate that, especially, I think it's more for you with actual.
Yeah, well, we may get phone calls and stuff, and we can let dispatch know, you know, if we.
Here at town hall, they'll need to know.
I'm going out in the back, somebody's shooting out in the alley. You have to bank, that's good. Yeah, let us know when it's gonna happen, that'd be good to know.
Yeah, yeah, he said he'd give you a better heads up.
Okay.
And then I think everything else is in the council.
Thanks. No old business, I just, we'll move forward to new business, and first item is ordinance number eight sixty-three, and I think we've looked at it in previous meetings, and perhaps we need to ordinance, but we never move forward. So.
Only question I have, Travis, have you, Chief, have you actually been able to put this ordinance over, and the ones who will help enforce it?
I have not seen it in fruition yet.
So it's something we've talked about a lot, just no smoking in parks and stuff, so.
What is the number again?
Eight sixty-three is what I have here.
So it's something that's a help, and helping all the citizens, especially those who are trying to beat those small children and stuff, so it makes sense, so just look at it, and we'll know as soon as possible.
I'll get a copy from Donna.
Should have, did you not get a pack of copies of all the ordinance you're on? Did you give the package or no? The tenth one? It should have been there.
I have it, it's on my desk.
You know, I did find some kind of a title in this, on page two, section three, and the second sentence is unclear to me, so I think we need some.
Smoking, smoking, alcohol, drunk, smoking.
No, section three penalty, penalty, and the penalty, I'm sure that a violation remains uncured is a separate infringement. I think for the clarification, I left that. Well, it doesn't make sense with or uncut, incur, or.
Incur, or no, it's like.
Hasn't been fixed, so, yeah, we'll find that out.
Anyway, I don't know if that means each, obviously, each time they're caught, it would be a separate incident, separate, I don't know. Anyway, I think we need to ask our attorney about that.
Right.
Is there any, it says for penalties, but is there, is there a penalty?
It's a civil infraction, so it would be whatever.
A class A.
Class A, class B, whatever, right?
Probably go class D.
So that is just a schedule.
Class D violation would be.
It says class A.
I don't know why it is.
It's, yeah, it's like a traffic tip or.
It's a class A violation.
Something else.
That's what this is, that's four hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So that would be something that's already set up in the court, so.
Correct.
But we'll find out that word. I don't know if we want to go ahead and pass a little correction to be noted, or.
Have to pretend I question, I don't know, ask her what that word might mean.
The whole sentence doesn't even, I can't even think of one that makes the sentence work.
No, it's very strange.
I thought there was an illegal.
And maybe it's just not even had that word. If you Xed out that word, wouldn't it be the same?
What it's saying is each day that a violation remains unsatisfied, in the sense that they've gone to court and taken care of this, is a separate infraction, so does that mean every day, so I get, I get this on Wednesday, I don't, and I'm supposed to be in court on Monday, I don't, do I have a separate one for Tuesday?
See, that's.
And Wednesday?
And that can't be.
Thursday?
That can't be, because you set a court date on your, when you give them a.
Yeah, but if I don't pay my fine, does every day add another fine?
That's what it says.
That's kind of what it says.
Oh, yeah, just a text card, repeat smokers in the parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that we could, I don't know that we can regulate that, that would be something with the court.
I don't think that whole sentence needs to be done.
That can't be.
Because the court's responsible for fine structures.
One incident is one incident, and then you pay, you have to go to court and pay for that incident, you can't be.
But it doesn't give you an ally oxygen for the next incident.
Well, it doesn't, no, and, but that's pretty much of a given, with any law, the next incident is separate.
So how about if we postpone?
We can.
Take a separate charge, they get a separate notice.
Different notice.
A certification.
Was there?
Tell the tenth.
Was there any intention to say that somebody who is a repeat offender should be dealt with it a different way, because that's not addressed? I don't know if that was the intent or not, but that sentence doesn't make sense.
I think we need to talk to the attorney and.
Okay, so we want to table this out, no?
I think we need.
And I think we might want to re-look at that, the violation level, because class A violation, that's four hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Take one, that's about.
I think the first offense would be maybe a, what, D?
Yeah.
And then.
Can change.
Move up the chain if they have so many within a certain period of time.
Maybe that's the way to deal with it.
Like a DUI.
Howard, you have any thoughts on that? Or, or you could put it in there.
I got plenty of thoughts. We've been talking about this for a bunch of months.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know why we had to wait too long to figure this one out, because I think it's been...
Well, hopefully, since it's cold, there will be...
There's not many people in the park right now.
I think we need to get it clarified and, and I think start at a lower level of, of violation.
I had to look up the word uncured, because I...
What's the word?
It says not restored to health. So, but I don't, yeah, I think that's word.
Not interested in that.
And that's...
Really, ultimately, each violation is a separate offense, which is...
But I do think then, according to what Travis is telling us, is that, that it should start at a lower level. Maybe it's the class D that you guys were referring to. And then after repeat offenses, it could be moved up to a class A. And that would be the judge's decision, right?
Correct.
So if it's his second one, he's maybe going to leave it there. If it's his fifteenth, maybe he's going to move it up. And if he's really irritated about it, he can move it to the class A.
Yeah.
So that's the judge's decision then.
I think you need to put that on your, um, when you give them, you know, summons or whatever it is for, for court, you need to put on there what it is.
Yeah, we, the judge, we can leave freedoms to the judge, just like we do in our dog ordinance. Our dog ordinance allows us to start a citation at fifty dollars. And if we have repeat offenses, it can go up to, I think, four twenty or something like that. But the judge has the freedom to, I mean, it may be a first offense, but it may be so egregious to him that he charges them the full four hundred and twenty dollars based on the way that it's written in our, in our animal ordinance. And so, um, we can do the same sort of structure in there.
I will get clarification, so the next time if we do, we table it to the next meeting, whatever, I can make sure.
I'll just tell you, I, I think it needs to be high. And the reason I do is because, for one, if it's a low fee, people are going to ignore it and then you're going to have a hard time enforcing it because the fee's so low, they, they're going to think...
Well, a hundred and twenty-six dollars isn't what I'm considering.
No, it's, it's not low, I mean, but it's, you know, with people who don't care, it's going to be interesting. I mean, you know, we need the ordinance.
It's going to be about education, I think.
Yeah, exactly, and so it needs to be posted, I think, you know, seeing a low fee might, you know, people might take the risk.
I think we're doing this evidence because we're going to post something as, those looking as per ordinance number eight sixty-three. So they will know that it is a town and a violation of law.
And possibly with, uh, when you're writing a ticket, I don't know if it, if you can do this or not, but it's one thing if it's some guy all by himself sitting up at the town pool park up there having a cigarette. It's a very different thing if it's two or three dads down here at a birthday party with, you know, you know, a couple of dozen kids running around. I don't know if that makes a difference to the law, but...
It just depends on how the ordinance is written.
Okay, I will check.
Okay, so you'll check with Jeff?
But I thought you had it in the last meeting, so...
Okay, ordinance number eight sixty-three, we need to... Table that until the next meeting. And resolution number nine eighteen is next on our agenda, and that's renumbering ordinances. And I'll have to turn it over to someone to ask for explanation.
What is the...
Just tell me what we're doing here.
Oh, basically, what has happened is through some, um, it's been quite a while back, but there's been some misnumbering of ordinances. So this corrected by doing this resolution, then it correct, then no ordinance, so...
It just realizes with the...
There, there was A's added and that's not in our code book or, or, you know, the, you know, the... applies, whatever, so...
Mr. President, I'm, I'm moved to approve this resolution. Nine eighteen as, as stated.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and resolution number nine nineteen approving exhibit A, Department Corrections and Labor Program.
Yeah, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. I agree, we approve resolution number nine nineteen in the matter of amendment to master agreement number five one seven with DOC Warner Correctional Facility Work Orders of A.
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
And resolution number nine twenty surplus property police Tahoe.
So if anybody has any questions on that, I was approached by parole probation. Uh, they want to buy one of our Tahos that we have, they're looking for a transport vehicle. And so they've offered us what I thought was a very fair price of thirty-five hundred dollars. In addition to that, two hundred and fifty dollars for us to do the work that we would have normally done as a donation to the fire department to strip off all the decals and get it ready for them to take possession. So, um...
Well, it makes up to Christmas Valley in that.
Uh, you know, the thing runs absolutely wonderful. I mean, it, it's not what I would consider safe for high-speed pursuits, but for everyday traveling, I think it's got about a hundred thousand miles left in its, in its life, so...
And we don't need it?
No, no. Uh, it's one of the vehicles that we took offline, again, because of mileage and the safety of the officers driving at high speeds. Um, it's got approximately a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it, if I recall correctly. And so it's enough mileage that it's, you know, for, for high speeds, it's probably not the best thing, but for everyday travel, I think it'll be a good vehicle. We still have, after this, two remaining Tahos that are ninety-nines that will circle us out. One of them, you know, we've put a new engine in it about five years ago. It's got a new transmission in it two years ago. It's got a new transfer case and it may be one even the town can keep if they needed a vehicle uh, just for doing stuff around. Because we've done a lot of work to it, it's got a lot of new parts. Again, not what I would consider safe for high speed, but, you know, for everyday work, it would be fine.
Thank you for working with our partners.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. President, I think most of you approve resolution nine twenty, you know, declaring surplus probably.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have next Woodstow change out information.
Good job. I think that's pretty cool. We are making progress, I hope we find more funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a hundred and, what was it, nineteen?
Totally.
No, yeah. Total change outs was...
I'm impressed with the number of people who've gone with the heat pump.
You know, they like it.
The heat pumps, yeah.
And so last week I had, I took Ken Kessner out thinking we were going to see who's burning. Do you think we caught anybody burning?
No.
Three people were burning. Yet, granted, it was still a green day, but nobody was burning, I'm like, nobody was burning.
Just...
There were stones, not even you. You weren't burning either. I thought for sure I would see you burn me.
I don't know.
I was just trying to show Ken the areas that I drive that I look for because he is offered also to drive around the evenings that I don't drive around. Because you can see the smoke better sometimes at night. You see it right after. Yeah, the town is working with us for air quality. It's been pretty helpful.
I can tell you with those new wood stones, like the one foot in my house, unless I'm loading wood, you wouldn't know.
You don't know that they're burning.
If my, if I'm flipped on to where it's running through that kind of converter, there is no smoke that comes out of my chimney.
Yeah, I have to say, the people in the town, yes, we still have our few that are very upset about the program, but everybody who's been very kind about it, I guess those are the right words to use. But they haven't fought me on this, you know? They call, yes, they don't always call the line, the fifty-eight hundred line. They call me on the line because they want to hear me say, yes, it's green. But it, everybody's been good.
We, we no longer have the exception, am I right about this? For a single source of heat?
Nope, no longer.
And yet, I think we still have some people who are in that category. And are they, uh, do we, we don't have any money left to target them.
Not right now. That's very unfortunate because, you know, if we could help them, we'd be glad to. And we're looking for additional funding and, and SCL is looking for, you know, additional funding. So hopefully we will get some more. Yeah, because they have quite the waiting list. I've had, I've already sent seven people to PM to be put on the waiting list. Well, just in a couple of weeks.
Well, these numbers are pretty impressive on the, the change outs tonight. And it came through the last few years with these totalled in. We are making some, anyway, so...
They're good.
Good deal. Uh, State Representative Vince is going to be over in Agdell for a Town Hall meeting when there's an informational item there. Any comments on that or discussion?
And he formally doesn't cover our area, but I've heard that he may be planning to cover our area and I don't know if that's true or not, but, anyway.
Well, we're in this weird thing, aren't we? I mean, it just cuts over, people on this side and people on this side and it's...
You may, you may make a switch to state senator because the Senator Tally Faro, which does come down pretty close to here, I think, or, and, uh, he has been chosen for, and appointed and accepted the Bonneville Dam Authority. And so he's serving on that and it's resigned from the state legislature. So that could be that he's just looking at a state senate seat.
Stuff out there, but I don't know what's...
Yeah, what might be, so... Well, he's very, he's very instrumental in the, in the state legislature, he does do a lot of that.
He has done some great things, I know, and out here in county, he did some fantastic things above and beyond what, you know, I've seen represent him do in the past. So, I mean, I, I have...
This man?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's just information.
And then we have the LOC bulletin, which is inclusive in the packet as well. And then we have a street closure for the Christmas light, which is this Friday night. And it's five thirty-seven between E and F, and that is, um, Senator...
Also on that real quick, I got it approved through Commissioner Winters to bring some, uh, those little fire pits. And so we'll have, uh, little bonfires for the kids to stand around this year.
Warming pits, right.
To, to warm them, their mitts up a little bit. It's been pretty chilly in the past, so, um, we'll definitely have one. I'll bring my personal one from home. I'm hoping to find two, we'll figure out exactly where to put them. And as long as it's not a red day.
Yeah. I don't want a citation. I'll stay there with my fires.
So, uh, that is the plan, is to set up a couple of, uh, little fire pits for the kids to gather around this year.
That'd be nice.
Good idea. So no problem, Chief, in regards to the closure on that street, you know?
I don't see anything, I mean, it's probably going to be less than an hour or so.
Yeah.
The public works, I think, is on board to get everything shut down for us.
And mayor council updates? I don't have anything myself, but, Sharon?
Um, met with Chamber this morning. They're gearing up for, uh, already for the gala. I don't know how many of you are planning to attend the gala and hopefully in nineteen twenties costume. No, costume gear, appropriate dress. I was told it's not a costume. So anyway, uh, but I will tell you that, um, our caterers said two hundred was what, was what they could handle. And there are less than ninety, this morning, there were ninety-nine tickets and I know at least another ten have gone out. So if you are planning to attend and I, I urge you to do so, uh, the tickets, you need to be getting your tickets because they are going. I can't believe that over a hundred of them have already been sold. And it's not until January thirteenth. Lakeview is not the town that usually does things ahead of time. You know, we wait till the day of and expect us to walk in the door and have the ticket there. It's not going to happen. The other thing is both in Saratoga today and at the Chamber, we had further discussion about, uh, the fact that Southern Oregon, uh, Southern Oregon travel or Southern, uh, branch of Travel Oregon, as well as Travel Oregon, is coming in with some very, very advantageous, uh, programs for us, for our tourist development. And they're going to be, uh, very, they're very interested in the rodeo and the agriculture things that have been going on with the Chamber. And they're also looking at some outdoor recreation, which translated means to a lot of training and a lot of, uh, information and dissemination of, uh, all the publicity that we can get and it's pretty much free and it may be bringing in something about biking. But in, you watch for when the meetings are posted because that everyone is welcome to come and they're going to start outlining this. This town, the county, has to, uh, really design the, uh, focus of these projects. So if, you know, there's an area that we really want to, uh, key in on. The other thing that I will share with you is that, um, the Southern Oregon, uh, branch has become very interested in the ski hill and OPB is, I am sued. Have most of you seen that?
Yeah, I have.
That really nice little, um, uh, video that they put out. Uh, Southern Oregon is going to take that and capitalize on it and is also going to be doing some more publicity and putting it out in some of their amazing... So it's looking, it's looking pretty good for our motel tax, actually.
And just if I can touch on that real quick, we need to get that advisory committee form for the lodging tax. Or, you know, to get that committee. So I don't know how you guys want us to solicit it or if we want it to add out, would it do that? I mean, I don't know, or it just works by mouth. But I think in January, because it go, is implemented in April, so we really don't have much time, so in January.
Do we have any guidelines for how that committee's going to be set up or the makeup of that committee?
I think we need a work session in regards to that and to also look at all of our documentation and our, our... Because there is a lot of work that we need to do to prep for it.
You probably need that sooner rather than later.
I, I don't know if we would, I, I think we need a work session. I don't know if we can do it in December or not, I don't know much, whatever, but it's, it's got those looking at it.
We're sending a meeting on the twenty-sixth of December, the day after Christmas.
Most, most likely we'll live it, maybe, setting that one aside. Maybe we can take care of all of our business in the early meeting.
So if we could have a work session, our first meeting in December and then at least maybe try to set up some kind of deadlines or what we want.
Because we need to finalize two, the crossings, road...
The ATB.
Eighteen crossings during work session two, so we will make sure that is on, that's in power law.
The next meetings of January, for work session previous to that.
And I'd like an update from legal counsel on annexations at some point, too.
I can get that on your own. We talked about that this morning. Yeah, so the status right now on Paterson Road, uh, we are still, I have the consent form for the county to sign, but it's, it doesn't go into effect yet. There's some more paperwork that totally goes into effect once the consent to annexation is signed. So I do have that for the commissioners. And then, um, or just, we're working on that, we talked about that today. And they'll be paying their fees so we can get them brought in. And then the other ones, um, the consents have already been signed on the birth. But, um, and some I think are still left on S, but at least we get, uh, but we talked about that. And so both Jeff and Daryl are working on that right now. It was our discussion this morning.
No.
Okay, does that help?
Yeah.
And Sandy, did you have any...
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. And you're... Right, I have, oh, and you have...
What?
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
No, I don't need to talk too much, but, um, next week, um, on Monday afternoon, Shelley and I are going to Salem to talk about budget. There's some budgeting format, well, she's never done it from the municipality. I have, but we got into this class, I'm the old one, she's the young one. So, you know, to kind of get us ready and prepared for next year. So we have those two trainees and we're also meeting with the bank up there to talk about moving our bank. It has not been very cooperative. We've been using US and it's, it hasn't been cooperative. We don't have a local commercial person, um, closest is Medford, right? And she resigned, I mean, she's not there anymore.
She's not, she's not there anymore. The, um, the government banker for Southern Oregon is out of Medford and she left the day before I started and has not yet been replaced. So you can't get... So you can't get from point A to point B at this point in time.
Right.
And the fee schedule is about four times any of the quotes up there.
Right. Because I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but every month on our bank statement, we're paying almost five hundred dollars a month for them to analyze it. Um, and that's kinda, you know, paid for so many debits, so many credits, you know, and it's all kind of mixed stuff, but it's about five hundred dollars a month. That's a lot of money.
For analyzing fees?
Yeah.
First out.
Yeah, so anyway, but we're gonna talk to them and then we will bring a proposal.
You're talking to a different bank then, or a different?
Three different ones.
Looking at different...
We're talking...
Getting bids?
Yes, and that's what you do, you know, soliciting.
Yes, we're getting proposals.
Unco, uh, Washington Federal, yes, and then Citrus. They also deal with it. So, you know, they're all local. We'll see.
That's really nice to keep it local if, if you get the service you need.
Well, and that's what is just been really rough and that's, um, you know, just with our banking cards. I can't, or Shelley can't go online and find out on, you know, cause everybody has a, a card. And most of them are in the safe, but we can't go and say, okay, wanna see how much X spent this month? We can't go look that up. We have to wait until they turn in the receipts, if they turn in their receipts. So we had a staff meeting today, just so you know, and, uh, kinda go over, bring everybody together, make sure they're bringing in their invoices, make sure, because, you know, it's not fair to have one of us code stuff.
Wonder what should I have charged?
Themself. And so we're, we're trying to make some improvements, so.
So in other words, at the end of the month when you get a statement, you're not always sure...
What those charges are with them?
Right. I mean, we kinda know, but yet it's pretty iffy.
The bank probably knows with that much analyzing.
Right. But anyway, we're just looking at options. We're just, you know...
I think that's a, a good step.
Yeah, good step. So, and then I don't know if you guys heard about the health thing. Um, that was just a, a deal and not be able to get online to pay it. Uh, but we did, we got it taken care of. Nobody was, not covered, um, but it was a big issue on Facebook. And so we're trying to eliminate Facebook. I, I'm looking at drafting a Facebook policy for what we can do, but then that's freedom of speech on different things. So it's very...
To what?
You know, so we're just looking at things that we can do, so. And then I'm in the process of updating our financial policy. Some of the things that are in there currently are way outdated. And so that was something I would like to have a work session on also, so if we can get it done in the next week, we'll get it.
Sounds like January.
Well, yeah, before that. No, we do, but I'll see what I can get, you know, so we'll try it.
So it sounds like we're gonna be busy in our December meeting, for sure.
Yeah.
Any other items for discussion before we go out? All right, we will adjourn this meeting at four fifty-five.
For anybody with something to say.